Let's see. So it's been children. I don't know. I think I'm the person who's.
Trustees, make a motion to take us back out of the executive session and back into regular meeting.
Second.
And second. Back in regular meeting at seven fourteen. Okay, next on the agenda, review approval of prior meeting minutes. There are no minutes to for fiscal officers report service.
So first of all, in your folder, there not to be reports that I submitted, there's only one, one page. So there was two other reports. And I don't know why. Anyway, I did send you guys reports. But in the month, I put that that was in your email. Just want you to be aware that there are more bills I put in today that need to be signed. I told they come in late, they're already passed due. Because I get them back from the department late. They need to get those signed. You can't wait until every meeting. Every two weeks, you guys sign. You have to come in and say, there's no time. At least once a week, the sign comes through. But at least send me a message, say, do I have anything to sign here? Call me or whatever. And I'll let you know. Because we gotta get those people paying late fees. With that being said, I just know that the bottom, I don't think it's appropriate.
That seems more like a policy that someone needs to be written there. How many times have we signed checks in the meeting? Lots of times. You really sign checks in the meeting where I don't?
Just checks there like high for hour.
Remember, we need to get them out more often than every two weeks or sometimes. Because you only have too many months. Like this past month, we had five weeks that we didn't have, so we messed up. We need to kind of revisit that again. But again, I suggest that you guys come in at least once a week to check for bills or, like I said, give me a call, text me. Now, other than that, I don't think I have anything else about something I have something to make.
I have to make a motion to accept a fiscal, fiscal officer report, pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, warrants.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay, old business, meeting minutes. Any updates, trustees?
Whenever we hire the two people that we are copying about, one be working with a fiscal officer and the other would be working with the ministry. The first thing on the agenda will be to do the minutes. So since we've missed this meeting, it's going to be the next. Now, we had a form that we were supposed to be putting those things together. So we need that for the next meeting.
What about, as we go on, give or take about eighteen months worth of minutes that have not been generated? What about the resolution that we passed to have them transcribed? Kind of stale management, Goffman doesn't want to give up any of the recordings. So we're bound by law to create the minutes.
Give up recordings.
I have to record the recording on the website.
Oh, those are recording, you're meeting on social media.
First of all, our recording is on the website.
So you want to get an official record by meeting off of social media?
I didn't say that. I used.
That's what you just said.
Back in the up, you said that I will give up recordings. What recordings are you saying I'm not giving up?
Well, you bought, paid for, in the township, you signed your own check to reimburse yourself for minutes, Zooming minutes, which has held up this process to turn that into have a legal transcription that catches up on minutes.
Those minutes have been transcribed.
Okay, but you get to present those to the trustees and that's a whole mess that you're aware of.
I said I presented it to you. Or you did.
I asked for it several times. You said it was out on the drive, right there. So where is the copy of that?
When you take away the resolution, you expect me to pay for.
So you're.
You, let me finish. You, you passed the resolution, you passed secondly, that you, you want me to pay the money that I paid to have that transcription done. You want me to pay that back. But give it to you. So what you said, I paid you so many a car, I'm going to give you the money back for the car, and here's the car. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense. Once you tell me I don't have to pay for that, then you can have it.
So in other words, you're a black val.
I'm a black val, but I'm paying for what's being done. It does legally, legal, it's been done by a machine. I listened, the only first, only one I listened to was the first one. Listen to the tape and read the paper. And it's exactly the same word for word. It's done by a computer, it's done by technology. They were there. They were done cheap. Let's proceed on and take away the resolution, expect me to bring that money back, and you can have it.
And part of that transcription was to check, spot check those.
Do that.
For accuracy. Because if they check out, it could be a cheaper, more viable solution.
Correct.
But without that data that we can provide to the transcriptionists, number one, it's cheaper to generate those. Number two, if they're accurate, we can fast track catching errors.
So when you, so you passed the resolution, will you want to pay somebody? I want you to rescind that resolution, but at the same time, you passed that resolution, you passed the resolution that you want me to pay that, I can't remember the exact number, three thousand dollars or something, back to the township. Because township is paid, the township is paid their tax dollars to have these minutes transcribed. It was done. And I was given a check for that. You want me to give that check back, but also, so you wanted, in the same meeting, you had another resolution where you're hiring somebody and giving them, I don't remember the exact number, four or five grand to verify the transcriptions are correct. So you're going to pay somebody, there's forty-three hours of meeting minutes of audio for that year. So you're going to pay somebody four or five thousand dollars for forty-three, forty-five hours worth of work, sit there and listen to that and read. Yes. That's still expensive.
Well, this is a your way or no way proposition.
Well, that's.
They rescinded that, the resolution for you to reimburse the trustees, this was because of all the violations. And that's a separate issue that you've already got on record.
So what, I did that, so as you had a resolution that you passed a meeting I didn't make, you passed a resolution to go word for word on, we, we had already agreed to do a short outline of the meeting minutes. And I was going to do some of the months, Tracy was going to start, you had agreed to do some of. No, this was, this was not audio, just a couple of months ago. And then, but in the same, in that, in the same timeframe, the next meeting, I had a health issue, I missed the meeting. And you passed a meeting, you passed a resolution that all said it's going word for word. And in that same resolution, the township will pay for this. The funds will come out of the township. Township's going to have this done, it's going to be retroactive back to January one of this year. And the township will pay for all that. That's what we did.
Well, according to our attorney, basically, no matter what, the minutes have to be generated.
They've been generated.
So unfortunately, Mr. Mann, the tiebreaker falls on you. I'm not willing to rescind that resolution. And we've got direction from our attorney that we need to do something. So if you want to clean this up by virtue of an employee, we can do that, but that's a delay that's, that's a lot of work.
Okay, you guys are talking about the of starting this process right away, if you can agree on something. I'm talking about starting it in a couple of weeks, and we will have our own employees to work.
Two different, we're not talking about the same thing. We were talking about the minutes of twenty that have been transcribed of the year, all the minutes, all the meeting minutes of twenty twenty. You're talking about hiring a new employee and starting here in the next couple of weeks within due process to do the minutes going forward.
No, I'm, I'm talking about at that point, they are our employees.
Yes.
And we will put them on the minutes to clear this thing up.
That's a compromise.
So you have that person go back and live and do the minutes for all twenty twenty?
We will put both people on that and get this project done. Unless you have.
I'm good with that approach because it's a compromise and at least it's moving forward because we had.
But you have to, you have to give the draft description turned in at the next meeting.
Okay, so there again, you, you have two employees do it, and there's always room for human error. With a machine doing it and taking that, a machine is pretty flipping accurate. Listen to that audio, the dictation machine, whatever they call their things, that's what, that's what did this one.
Pretty accurate is not good enough for.
Well, to me, to me, an employee like that, that's not, how we know, how we know it's inaccurate?
That fly-by-night approach, no. And the only way to see if your way works is to audit it.
Let, let, let me give you another solution here. Mister McLaughlin.
Yes.
Can you give us eight of those documents of the minutes that you had generated?
You want eight of them?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
All right. And then if we take those eight, we'll send them and let them check. And if they agree with it or they're agreed, then we'll go ahead and take it back.
I'll give you the first eight meetings of twenty twenty.
I want you to give me a random.
Me random. A random sample. That's body. Just a little FYI.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Do whatever you want. Then you give me the meetings you want.
All right.
Give me the list.
I'll have it.
So you're going to, I'm going to give you, you're going to give me a list of eight meetings. I'm going to give you the transcripts of those meetings. You're going to have them looked at by an outside source. Who's looking at them?
Well, we already, we already got a transcription, so.
Thank you.
It's with Land Key Court Reporting.
What is it?
Land Key Court Reporting, we've used them before.
So they're going to, they're never going to take it and they're going to verify it. We use their decision, and if they say those match, then we're going to go ahead and proceed putting.
There's no decision. They're basically going to tell us how accurate they are and how much they need to be cleaned up. If they're accurate, the cost and the labor that it takes to generate the minutes, because I used to check quite a bit with Adrian, and it tied up. If we had a three-hour meeting, it would take her three or four days to generate the minutes. And so.
That's not a problem with that, Jim.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, okay, it tied up that kind of manpower. So I forget what your proposal was, but it was cost-effective to do it that way, but we have to make sure they're accurate before we can start using it for public record purposes.
So back up again. So Mister Mann, you give me, you give me six meetings that you want transcriptions of. Give me six of them, I give you the transcripts, we're going to pass that on to Land Key Court Reporting.
Resolution twenty-one dash oh one.
Twenty dash, twenty-nine what?
Twenty-one dash oh one. Authorize the purchase transcription services from Land Key, not exceed five thousand dollars.
Okay, so proceed on. Okay, thanks. So we're going to give them those six, they're going to, they're going to tell us how accurate they are.
Back to eight.
Okay, eight, sorry. Okay, and then they're going to tell us how accurate they are. If they say they're accurate, they'll proceed on and give you all the rest of the transcription minutes for that year and it's done.
No, then I won't bring this whole mess back to the table and start clearing some of this up.
No, no, that's not, we, we just agreed on. So I'm going to give you those eight recordings, those eight transcriptions, we're going to give them to this third party, they're going to verify. If they say they're good, then it's a done deal. I'll give you the rest of them, we'll put them out there by C, and we're done with minutes for twenty twenty.
You have to consult your legal counsel before you make a decision.
Well, each of us has a vote on approving the minutes.
We just do not want to be transparent to our residents of our township.
No, you don't want to work with the rest of the board. You bought the minutes on your own.
I bought mine on my own.
And you signed your own check to reimburse yourself.
You signed your check on reimbursing yourself on stuff too.
No.
I got, I got records up. I believe you signed your own. They done it. They like, they act like it's one person, one person doing it.
So you need to just take that.
So if you want those eight transcriptions, you're going to have to tell me that you're going to, when they say they're accurate, you're going to rescind, take all those transcriptions that have been done by Zoom, and we're going to put them out and be done with it. If you want those eight, it's going to be, I'll give you those eight, they go to the third party. When they say they're good, we, we transfer, we give all those transcriptions out, make it, make it a public record, it was done for twenty twenty, then we got to try to go start building for twenty twenty-one, where the seventh month of still hasn't been done yet.
I'm not comfortable with that at this point. They're looking at Peterson's email to us. So if you want to, if you want to staff the cleanup for it, then, then we need to work on filling those positions.
Then I need you guys to have Hernan's, the, some of your finished, the draft description, give it to him, and we can have a road through to record minutes. Let's see. You gotta, we, we gotta do that.
Well, that's the compromise. I mean, that. Okay, next, any other issues on the minutes before we move on? Stay on the project. Who had that on here?
I put it up there in case anybody had anything they wanted to contribute.
I want to be. Okay, new business. Trustees, do you have any new business to bring forward? Mister Mann.
No, the only, the only thing, man, that got a description for the Peterson, we're going to hard, we need that turned in soon as possible to Mister Wolf.
Mister Goffman, any new business?
Nope.
Okay, let's move on to resolutions. Trustees, in a work session, we discussed the lighting assessment and the mowing assessment resolutions, and it was discussed that we want the addresses attached to the resolution before we vote. So instead of tabling it, we'll just push these into the next meeting. Everybody in agreement on doing that instead of tabling them. Okay, then Mister Wolf, can you move these resolutions, which they have not been numbered? One is for the lighting assessment, and one is for the mowing assessments. And basically attach the spreadsheets with the addresses and partials as a part of the record.
Yes.
What resolution are we on? So this is general resolution number.
Oh thirty-four.
Okay, resolution number twenty-one dash zero three four. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorize the township administrator to perform internal posting for the hiring of a full-time road worker one to fill the vacant full-time road worker position at a starting rate of sixteen fifty per hour. I move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh three four.
You already got a copy of this?
No, we have three L's, one P's.
So does this mean we dropped a person, we dropped a person in the staff, we're not adding either, so we're going to promote a person.
Correct, same body, this will be the first one to visit.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mister Goffman, second motion. Discussion, trustees. Roll call please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
You got it, passed it, and you're going to sign it? It's amazing.
Okay, next resolution is resolution number twenty-one dash zero three five. Jefferson Township Board Trustees hereby agree to release the request for proposal for the future purchase of a new fire engine slash tanker to improve fire response and water supply in the township.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero three five.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, trustees.
Roy, you were in this meeting, the, look at my notes, was it the guy, the other two guys on the committee, Chris Wagner, and the other name, the other name I didn't, what was the other guy's name?
Matthew Eagle.
Matthew Eagle. Thank you. It's all right, roll over, go ahead.
Roll call please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-one dash oh three five, pass. Okay, resolution twenty-one dash zero three six. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees accept the resignation of one part-time paramedic and one part-time PMT and one part-time firefighter EMT from the Jefferson Township Fire Department, which involves the employees Julie Davidson, David Blackthorne, and Ryan Lovegibbon.
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty-one dash zero three six.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Trustees, any discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next resolution is resolution number twenty-one dash zero three seven. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorize the township fire chief to hire probationary firefighter slash AEMT Sean Arthur, probationary EMT Brian Kegel, probationary firefighter Adam Carey, probationary paramedic Madison Curtis.
So I can make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash oh three seven.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mister Mann. Any questions, discussion?
I do.
Mister Mann?
No question.
Roll call please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
And your resolution passes. My resolution passes, we got. Okay, next up, resolution number twenty-one dash zero three seven.
Eight.
Year three eight. Approving the posting of the required audit adjustments for two thousand twenty audit. Whereas the Auditor of State has recommended audit adjustments be made to the current township budget for the audit ending period thirty-one, December two thousand twenty, and whereas, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and recommendations from the Auditor of State, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees desire to make the recommended reallocations within the below-listed funds, in parentheses, to cover the expenses not accounted for in the original budget. Increase fund one thousand, thirty-five thousand, three fifty, increase fund at two oh three one to eight thousand, four fifty-seven, increase fund at two oh eight one, twenty-nine thousand, twenty-seven dollars, decrease fund code at twenty-one eleven, seventy-two thousand, three ninety-four, and decrease fund code at twenty-four oh one, four hundred and forty dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh three eight.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on this, trustees? Roll call please.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McQuire.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, that concludes resolutions for tonight's meeting. Department reports. Sheriff, do you have any report for us?
Do not, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Wolf, any reports?
Yes, I have a report from the Code Enforcement Department as well as the Zoning Department, you all have those in your packets and in your email. Tony McKee is still on injury leave, there's no re.